I'll call the meeting to order. This is Eastline Board of Selectmen, Special Meeting of July 21, 2021. If we'd all please rise, if you could, for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Daigle, would you lead us off?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, in special meetings, we do not have public delegations. We added them on tonight. I know that some people want to speak to us, and so we put them on both at the beginning and the end of the meeting tonight. Anyone like to speak? Camille?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I am Camille Alberti. I am speaking as the Chair of the Board of Finance, and I have a letter that I would like to read into the record tonight, and after I am done, Sandy, I will give you a copy of that for your records. Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, here and after referred to as CLA, issued their annual audit on the town of Eastlime's finances to Town Management on May 13, 2021. CLA made a presentation of that audit and related finances to the Board of Finance on July 14, 2021. The First Selectmen and the Finance Director were present at this meeting. During the course of the presentation, I was alarmed to learn that we received the most serious audit rating for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
Is that microphone working?
Yeah.
It's not. Let's see if that's better. Okay. Because I am uncertain of your awareness regarding the audit results, I am here to bring attention to the gravity of the report's content. Let me begin by identifying the three categories of audit ratings in order of least to most serious, as they relate to internal control, and I will provide a description of those findings as defined by CLA. Number one, deficiency. A deficiency in internal control exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees in the normal course of performing their assigned functions to prevent or detect and correct misstatements on a timely basis. Number two, a significant deficiency. A significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention to those charged with governance. Number three, material weakness. A material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control such there is a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. The town of Eastlime received a material weakness audit rating for internal control over financial reporting. The effect of this finding, as explained by CLA, is that management does not have accurate financial information upon which to base management decisions. Additionally, it means that there are insufficient controls in place to prevent fraud, theft, or embezzlement. I want to be very clear. I am not suggesting that bad behavior currently exists amongst our many dedicated and loyal town employees. However, we can ignore the two separate instances in 2019 where two Eastlime fire officials were arrested for theft. We cannot expose our taxpayers to the liability of an individual, a customer, or perhaps even a vendor that has bad intentions and acts upon them. An article published in the day newspaper on June 18, 2021, which I am including as an attachment to this letter, quotes our First Selectmen. There are checks and balances in place to prevent theft from occurring. And yet, CLA, in its audit communication letter to the Board of Finance, stated that no new accounting policies were adopted and the application of existing policies was not changed during the fiscal year ended June 30, 2020. So I asked the Board, how can both statements be true? I've been vocal for many years about the necessity of reviewing and revising policies and procedures to ensure proper internal controls exist that would help prevent such fraud, theft, or embezzlement. Unfortunately, those calls for action have largely been ignored. There are many other alarming findings in the audit report. Here is just one more example. There is a note in the auditor's financial statements under stewardship, compliance, and accountability as it pertains with and deals with deposits and custodial credit risk. I'll let the Board read the entirety of the note on your own time, but I will, I would like to direct your attention to the sentence that reads, $23.3 million of the town's bank balance of $25.4 million was exposed to custodial credit risk. I am willing to bet that everybody in this room ensures that our own personal assets are within the FDIC limits. As fiduciaries of taxpayer monies, it is our obligation to provide the same assurances to our taxpayers. That is why I am urging this Board of Selectmen tonight to review the audit report, develop and/or revise policies and procedures, and implement CLA's recommendations to mitigate these risks in an expeditious manner. Reviewing the audit report will take some time because there are over 100 pages of detailed material to digest. Nonetheless, it is urgent that you begin the necessary work that will protect our taxpayers from the likelihood of an even greater attempt at pilfering our town's resources. Thank you for your time and your attention to this matter.
Thank you, Camille. Anyone else? I'll make a side note on that. The policies were changed in 2019, not 2020, and therefore wouldn't have shown up on the auditing report. The checks and balances system was changed to ensure the time cards that were submitted had a checks and balances. No money was ever stolen from the town. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. John Drabek.
John Drabek, 18 Drabek Road. Yeah, it works. We're here for money for a leaky roof and all the discussion that comes with it. We were told that building was in great shape, and then shortly after we purchased it, we found out there were a few leaks in the roof. Now, we spent a lot of money renovating the building. How come the roof is the last thing you fix? It seems completely backwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drabek. Anyone else? Okay, we'll go on to our presentation, discuss the discussion, possible action of the public safety building roof. Mr. Daigle, would you like to start us off?
Certainly.
Mr. Daigle is the Chairman of the Vision Committee and has sat with Mr. Salerno as ex officio on the town building committee as we have gone through the process of rehabbing this building. I thank you both for your service to the town. Mr. Daigle?
If you can't hear me, let me know. It's been a long day. I'll speak up.
What?
Thank you. The residents of Eastlime, along with past and present Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance members, have been proposing and debating the need for and how to provide a police-public safety building for our officers and for the town for over two decades. The debate has divided the town into many factions. Whether you agree where to locate it, whether you prefer a new repaired or renovated facility, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and town residents approved the purchase and renovation of the Honeywell Building on West Main Street. We're here tonight to address the need for and the funding of a new roof on the town-owned public safety building in order to successfully complete the approved renovation project. It should not be a surprise or be new to anyone that our public safety building would need a new roof at some time in the future. The Vision Committee discussed and debated this need during several meetings and overwhelmingly agreed to not include the replacement of the roof in the project based on the recommendation from the town high and architectural firm's assessment and projection of remaining roof life. During those meetings, at one point, the estimate for roof life was five, maybe to 10 years. That was subsequently reduced to a three- to five-year life, and that's, so coming into it, I know the Vision Committee understood, and I expect that the Board of Selectmen understood, that the building that we had already owned was going to need a new roof in the near future. The Board of Finance also discussed and asked several questions on the roof replacement decision and approved moving the project to referendum for town residents to decide how to proceed. Once again, the town was divided in a vote to fund the renovation of the Honeywell Building. At no time was anyone given assurances during the design and approval of the renovation project that the roof would not need to be replaced in the near future. Now, I will briefly review with you the current expenditures on the renovation project and then discuss the need for and cost of replacing the roof. Are there any questions from the Board before I proceed?
No, keep going.
Okay. What I presented with you tonight is a copy of the latest town building committee's accumulation of costs and expenditures, mostly costs because not all the bills have been paid, but, and what's been approved as part of the execution of the renovation project. I want to thank the building committee and both the contractor, Noble Construction, and the architectural firm for the work that they've done to date. At the top of the page, I've highlighted two line items in the budget, and these were town line items that weren't part of the contract with the contractor. First one was the clerk of works, which has been committed to and at a reduced rate to come in at less than $40,000, and it was approved for $50,000. Connection to the public waterway, currently, the expenditure has been $28,000. There's a potential for some additional costs to complete some of the work inside, and the building committee is forecasting that this will come under by at least $5,000, if not more, but that's to be determined. If you move down the list, the yellow items that are highlighted are items that the building committee has not yet approved. If they were to approve these items, the total at the bottom of the contingency line that's encumbered would show that we would overrun the contingency by $34,975. So I want to explain one of these and the largest item that has not yet to be approved, and that is the exhaust ventilation hood for the planned installation of a stove in the kitchen. The design that was presented and approved by the town called for a standard kitchen ventilation hood, and it was approved by the town officials, building official and fire marshal. Upon awarding of the contract and execution of the work, the newer fire marshal identified that that did not meet code, and in order to have a working stove in this building, you would need a commercial ventilation hood. The contractor was asked to provide a cost estimated for that, and it came in at $42,867, significantly more than a kitchen ventilation hood. Based on these total costs, there is not enough money left to fund these items above and beyond the roof item that we're here to talk to. If you go to the right-hand column, I just wanted to summarize, I rounded it off to near $1,000. If everything that's been presented or that's proposed to the Board of, I mean, to the building committee, would be $35,000 over budget. If you remove the $10,000 savings for the clerk of the works and the $5,000 projected savings for hookup of the water, we would be down to a $20,000 overage. If you remove the vent hood stove, which was not part of the original plan or design, if you remove that, I rounded it up to $43,000, it would leave approximately $23,000 of contingency left to go finish the project. One other thing I will mention, the cost to finish the project, if you look on the new PCO item for the carpet repairs at last week's meeting, the building committee is carrying $3,000. That PCO has not been formalized. We don't have a hard cost for that number at this time, so there's a possibility that that number would increase. If it was to increase, it would reduce the $23,000 that would be available. So that's where the project is from an expenditure standpoint. Any questions on that? So there is contingency left minus the need to install a commercial ventilation hood that is vented from the first floor through the second floor to the roof.
What line is the water, the water hookup?
The water line is up on top, connect the second green highlighted item.
I see.
That was a town cost, not a cost to the contractor or part of the contract, to bring water to the building. The town brought water to the building at a cost of $28,024, but there, I believe there's some more work required, so they're doing that. And we had to, if you also look, one of the PCOs that was approved was to put a PRV valve in because of the one-and-a-half-inch line, and that was proposed, cost estimate proposed by the contractor, Mr. Noble, and approved to execute by the building committee.
Is the $40,000 the total cost of connecting that?
That was the budget amount.
Okay.
And we have not expended the entire budget and don't expect to expend the entire budget at this time.
So in our initial discussion of the project, weren't we discussing that the developer that was coming in was going to cover part of the cost?
No, the developer was going to run the line, the water line, from the street to his property, and we were going to tie off of that line, and this is the cost to tie off and run it to the building itself.
So in other words, if we had had to do that on our own, that would have been a larger figure?
It would have been a larger figure. We would have had to come up in front of the property, out to the street, and tie it in, a much larger project and more costly.
Doug up 156, and have to repay it. Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So that did save the town and the town's taxpayers money by connecting to the adjoining development.
Okay, I'll yield the floor to someone else if they have questions.
We have Bill Silver and Brian Cleveland here from the Architect's Office. There might be some questions about how we got here. I know, you know, the Vision Committee was presented with about 25% of the roof life left in it. You know, about five, if you go five years out of a 20-year roof, a 20-year guaranteed roof, it's about 75% of the roof, if my math is right. And the Vision Committee knew that, yes, we'd have to put a roof on the building at some point, and the estimate was about 370?
Well, I was going to get into that next, if you don't want to.
Okay, I just want to acknowledge that the architects are here. Ed Noble, the contractor, is here as well, as well as Ken Vega. I just want to acknowledge you're here, but also here to answer questions.
Right.
That we might have.
As well as several members of the building committee as well.
Of the building committee.
So why do we need the new roof, and why do we need it now? The roof was going to need to be replaced. There was a minimum amount of budget put into the contract to repair leaks. Attempts have been made to repair those leaks, attempts above and beyond what was budgeted to do the leaks. Change order was approved, and there's been several attempts to repair the leaks. And the leaks, at this time, both the contractor and the architect feel that the opportunity to spend more money to try and find and seal the leaks is not going to guarantee that they're going to stop, because as they seal a leak, there could be one at another end of the building, and we could be chasing our tail and spending more money on repair than we originally estimated. If we have to replace that roof, you know, it's been almost two years since that estimate has come in. So at a three-to-five-year roof, we could spend another $5,000, $10,000, $20,000 chasing these leaks around. And the other driving factor here is, is the leaks are coming into the building in the IT room for the entire building. So we have delayed, or the town has delayed, Chief Finkelman has delayed, the installation of that IT equipment, because we don't want to put that at risk of being damaged by leaks coming through the roof. So that part of the project is on hold right now, and it will, until we come through the decision to replace the roof, that equipment will not be installed. That's a town-required responsibility to install that equipment. It's not the contractors. The contractor has been impacted by the leaky roof to some extent, and, but, to his credit, he's worked very hard and diligently and worked around what he can do and has put buckets out and emptied a bucket as necessary to keep any damage from happening due to the leaks. So the driving point here is the roof leak, attempts to repair the leaks have not been successful. Additional money has been sent to do that, not a whole bunch. I believe it's in the $3,000 range so far. I think some of the repair attempts was done in gratis by Mr. Noble, so thank you for that, sir. But the building committee has debated options, putting a sub-ceiling into the IT room to collect leakage and route it away from the equipment. None of it would solve the problem. So that is, that is why I'm coming forward to you to recommend that we replace the roof at this time to protect our $7.2 million investment in this building, which I think at a cost of, and if you look at the second handout I gave you, this is not an estimated cost, this is a proposed change order from Mr. Noble and from one of his subcontractors to replace the roof at a cost of $171,349.05. This is $200,000 less than the estimated roof replacement cost that was presented to the Vision Committee by the architectural firm at the time when we made our decision to make the recommendation not to include the roof replacement in the project. Individual members of the Vision Committee had their own personal reasons for that. Mine was pretty straightforward. I didn't see the need to invest another $371,000 and bond that money and pay interest for it when we still had life remaining in the roof. I also hope that when the town sold the building on Main Street, that that money would be used to replace the roof and not cause an increase to the taxpayers. Right, wrong, or indifferent, everyone can form their own opinion of whether it should or should not have been included, but it was known that it needed to be replaced sometime in the next three to five years. So this is an opportunity to do it at this time at a reduced price than what we thought it was going to cost. My recommendation is to authorize $200,000 vise the exact amount of the repair. That would provide $28,600 worth of contingency, about 16.7% contingency, and the reason I'm recommending that is once the roof gets opened up, if there's unknown things that we can't see at this time, I don't want to be in a position where we have to come back to both the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, and potentially the townspeople to pay for anything that's unforeseen. And if nothing is unforeseen and the project is, the roof replacement is executed at the $171,000, that contingency money will be returned to the town when we're done. So questions about the need, questions about the cost. As I said, a decision on this, the IT equipment will not be installed until a decision is authorized to move forward from a funding standpoint with this recommendation, and that's where we stand, and that will drive the completion date for the project, which right now, based on where we're at today, and this is not an exact estimate, it's going to be in the September timeframe, it will not be by the end of August, based on what we know today.
You want to know?
Good stuff. Yeah, Mrs. Salerno? No, great, great synopsis. Just to follow up, the building commission and architects brought this up to our attention that there may be an opportunity to do roof at a reduced cost than what we originally had to plan on. I think you said it was like 370. This came up three to four months ago. Paul and I asked the building commission to get a quote for it, and we would bring it forward to this commission. So this, we were, we were looking into this even before we knew we had the leaks caused when we cut into the roof for the elevator shaft. So this has been in the works a little bit. Now seems to be the time. The building commission's been doing a lot of very good work. This has been a difficult task. There's been a lot of meetings. They've done a really good job, and this was their recommendation, and that's why we're bringing it here tonight. And, yeah, exactly. That's all I have to say at this point.
Mr. Dickerson, you've done quite a bit of looking into what's acceptable for usage of the American Rescue Funds. This is clearly in the domain of public safety. The current building is unusable, and we're just desperate to get them out of that building. Is there any avenue for us to be able to use, to use the American Rescue Funds for this?
Yes, we have another mode of financing that we'll talk about, but yes, technically it would. This project was delayed by COVID. We lost some time, some valuable time, it turns out, that when we said three to five, here it is. It was a quick three. It was more like, you know, two, and we lost some of that time. American Rescue Funds are available to projects that have been delayed as a result of COVID, but also in the name of public safety. The financing package we're proposing for the Selectmen to consider, however, is to utilize some of the premium premiums we received from the selling of the municipal bonds for this project. When you go out and you sell municipal bonds, and our Finance Director might be able to explain this better than I could, municipal bonds are favored by the market right now. So we get a rebate back as a result of Wall Street, if you will, investors wanting to buy municipal bonds in this market with this economy. So we actually receive a rebate back, if you will, from the bond market, and it's in the neighborhood for this project of $500,000. Now, we usually do get that money back, and we spend it on reducing the debt, for sure, but also the cost of going to market, the lawyers and the cost of going to market is about $100,000 when we go and go to the market for that. But we still have $380,000 left over from the premiums of the bond market, and we are proposing to use that as it is an acceptable use. It's all part of the package of when the voters approved the project at referendum, and we have checked that out with Bond Counsel, and he has agreed that this would be a proper use for the premium dollars.
My preference would be to try to use the American Rescue Funds. There's a lot of money there, and a lot of the things that we wanted to do just don't qualify. We're not going to be able to use the money for those things. It's money that's available to us, and I think that the public would be much more receptive to using that money. Is there any way, if there's a delay in getting the rescue funds, that we could use the money that you just spoke about, that we could use that money? And then, it's too iffy to try to repay ourselves. You can't do it. So I think we need to get on this rescue funds and get somebody to help us with this and go for the money. I mean, we had, we had a whole list of things.
We have the money.
Well, we had a whole list of things that we wanted to do with the rescue funds, and we find out that most of those we can't do.
And those, and the initial, hmm, let's go through that. The initial brief coming from the National League of Cities took a very conservative approach, and that's when we had that list, and we pulled all the way back, because the initial release was pretty stringent. Since then, there's been some loosening up of the guidelines and interpretation. Since then, there's been some loosening up of the guidelines and interpretation. And in speaking with Representative Courtney's office and seeing what's in the paper today, Norwich is spending their money, Stonington's spending their money on, which are town capital projects, that is going to be the trend of this, this, this funding. If it is, if the Board of Selectmen would rather use the federal funds, we'll change the, the motion and we'll move forward with that. It is up to us, the body, the acting body of government here in the town, to determine the, the use and need for those funds. Because the project was delayed and because this is in the interest of public safety, especially in light of bringing everyone together for a more efficient public safety unit during the next pandemic or the next emergency crisis, it would fall in that. And that was a discussion I have had with the Congressman's office.
Do we have any idea of what the timeframe is for?
We've received $2.7 million in our account right now.
Well, then that's what I think we should go for. Do the paperwork and let's get it.
Okay.
That's fine.
Not even paperwork, cut the check. We have to approve it and, and we have to determine it's an allowable use, and I would agree with you it has, and have already had those discussions, and move forward.
I would prefer to do that and save the, the money that sort of is a payback for us and save that for something that...
Paying down the debt.
Either that or something that we desperately need that the rescue funds wouldn't cover.
Well, you kind of have to use the premium dollars on the project or paying down the debt as time goes on. And we have several projects out there over the last dozen or so years with premium dollars attached. And when we go to have to pay, make our bond payments every year, we use some of that money to pay it down, feather it in, therefore we don't get the full brunt, the taxpayers don't get the full brunt of that, of that debt.
Well, may I?
You may.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, the rebate back from the bond, floating the bonds, that can be used to reduce debt for which we always will benefit all the way into the future, having reduced whatever the amount is of, of the debt. We cannot use the rescue funds for reducing debt. That is prohibited, correct?
Correct.
And so it would seem to me that where we have a pool of funds that could not help us reduce debt, it would make more sense to use those funds if it's permissible. And I, I think from everything you've said and what I've read, it's my belief that this would be a permissible expense. It would be more fiscally responsible and beneficial to the town to do it in the way that Roseanne has just suggested, and I would support that approach.
I would agree.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I would agree. The American Rescue Funds are interest-free. The bond funds, if we don't use them to pay down the bonds, will have the town increase additional interest until we pay the bonds off. So to me, I'm not sure what the delta is in interest on $200,000, but nonetheless, you know, saving a few dollars is saving a few dollars. So I would be in support of using the American Rescue Funds as well.
I concur with that, too. And we've had discussions here, we talked about it before, then we had a pullback because we got the new guidance. But like Mark said, it has loosened up a little bit. Other towns are using it for capital improvement, so I totally support that idea. That, that would be a good use of the money.
And it's going to be capital improvements that are related.
It's related to leasing.
It has to be, you know, I talked to the Save the River, Save the Hills, they desperately need a pump-out boat. And, and the relationship we're going to make, or the tie-in to COVID there is, there's many, many, many more people on the water right now. You can't buy a boat, never mind get a boat slip. And it's causing us a surge of the need for our pump-out boat, and what they have is desperately inefficient. And our part of it is 12%, of the, the cost of a new boat, as the, the state is paying for 75%. We've had that discussion before. But those kind of tie-ins where, yes, the world has changed, yes, we had a delay in our project, yes, we have an increased need and, and it's public safety-related, will be covered there. I want to put on the record as well, I've met with both first selectmen candidates recently about the COVID money, the ARP money. And I just want to put out there that while we have six or seven items that we have proposed that's going to the Board of Finance for their approval, I have made a commitment to both candidates, that it's not my intention to go out and spend this year's share, the $2.7 million, that I think once the new first selectman is seated and the new Board of Selectmen is sitting here, that there will be a committee formed on how to spend, again, it's $5.4 million, it's a burden to spend, it's very difficult to spend that, again, with parameters, and, and to spend it wisely and properly. And, and, and I think a committee will be formed to do that. So while we have some immediate needs now, we talked about mental health, we talked about food insecurity in our very own community, and, and the need for electronic equipment such as hybrid meetings, it would have been nice to hybrid this tonight, we are live streaming on YouTube and not hybrid, so people at home cannot participate, et cetera, et cetera. This is yet another kind of immediate need, almost an emergency need that, that we should use this for. I concur. I just also want to put on the record, that's not my intention to go out there and spend money all over the place, but I think we should have a plan going forward. I think with three or four months left in my term, it would be best to patch the immediate needs and then go forward with a solid plan into the next four years of ARP spending. So I want to put that out there, but I agree with you.
I would like to comment further on the roof situation and backtrack a little bit. As you know, I'm rather passionate about history. So when this first came up, I think in good intentions, we decided to, that the best, the most expedient way was to patch the roof and try to make it last. And there were several townspeople at the time who spoke against that and felt that that was not wise, that we should have included the roof in the original project. So I sort of relate this to building a house. You build a house, you make the plans, or you, or you rehab your house, and you make the plans, and you think you're making the right decision. And then other things happen that you didn't anticipate. And I think that I'll be the first to say that I should have argued immediately for, continued to argue for the replacement of the roof to get it done right while we were building the project. So I will own that, that mistake.
I'll add that the, just a little more on the roof. So this is a 20-year roof we're getting, right? It will be installed with insulation, so we'll get more insulation value. I think it's R30 is going to be placed down on top of it before the roof goes down, so we're going to get a more efficient building, we're going to get 20 years out of this, out of this roof. And it's one of the only costs I could think of that actually went down after COVID. I mean, all the building materials have gone way up, this is actually one of the one things that went down in quite a bit. So this is the time to take advantage of it.
I'd like to ask if our guests, our experts here would like to comment on anything?
Try to bring them up for a little bit now. Is there anything to add, Brian or Bill, to the discussion or to clarify? Or have we covered it, in your opinion?
We've covered it. I mean, we can go over the history a little bit more, but if you'd rather talk about the value, well, if you propose roof.
Could you come to the microphone and maybe the podium over here, if you would? I think, you know, you took time out of your busy day and missed dinner to come on out, we might as well take full advantage of you being here.
Bill Silver with Silver Petroselyan Associates Architects and Engineers. To quickly recap, in the summer of 2019, we did a facilities assessment of the building to really determine the condition of all the various systems, including the air handlers, et cetera. And at that time, we identified one air handler that was older, the other was younger, and this committee decided, for instance, to keep both air handlers going and run it, run it as long as we could. That similar decision was made with the roof. And partially, it was because when we did our roofing assessment in the summer of 2019 and we presented the report to the vision committee, we said the roof would last until 2020, plus or minus. Now, plus or minus is based on our extensive experience, 30 years in the business with people that have been doing a lot of roofs, and we do about 15, 16 school and business roofs per year, and these are large expansive roofs. And they're based on our observations of our experts that are involved in all those roof replacement or assessment projects. When we walked that roof, there was no evidence of any of the seams opening up, the coating on it was unusual, it wasn't a vibrated coating, but it was still an additional coating that was put on there to extend the life and the reflectivity on the normally black surface. It was not delaminating when we walked that roof. And the more important thing is that our observations are truly based on what we can see from the surface and what we see from below at, when we pop open the ceiling tiles to see if the deck is deteriorating. Quite often, roofs can leak, they can lay on the metal deck, and then the deck can start rusting. And that's usually an indication, when you see rusted deck, of extensive leaking that you can't see from the surface. It was based on those observations that we said there is at least, when we first wrote it up, as 2020, plus or minus. And that was in the summer of 2019 that we issued that report to the committee. During the next year of deliberations and design work, we were always asked, how long can the roof last? And we would always end up on the Pollyanna side of plus. Well, yeah, you could get three to five years out of it. But the could, again, is based on not doing roof cuts, which is sometimes a normal procedure when you really want to determine the, the condition of your insulation boards underneath as well as the membrane. We did not take the roof cuts because there was no evidence of delamination or deterioration. The membrane was not riffling, we call it riffling, in the wind, that sometimes can cause delamination or premature failure. There were just no signs of it. And in the same breath, knowing the priority of the overall budget and working with the vision committee for months on the overall budgeting goals, the priorities were to get the police department in under what we all felt was a roof that could last through 2020 plus. And we don't have the crystal ball that says precisely how long that roof is going to last. So that gives you a little bit of the history of where we stood with the roof. We did include in the bid documents repair dollars, which have been done. And Ed was just commenting that a recent aerial that they took of it, it's starting to look like a black and white in terms of the black repairs now going down onto the white-coated surface. And, and they're doing their best to chase down those leaks. Then, do you want me to step forward to the value? The price that you, that you have received from the subcontractor through Noble Construction is, in our opinion, surprising because we have bid eight, nine different roof projects since April. And some of them are 80,000 square feet, some of them are only 20,000 square feet, and the cost per square foot on those is over $20 per square foot. Same procedure, rip and replace, get it right down to the metal deck and start all over again as this price. And so we are not asking, we are saying, wow, that's great value, don't ask any more questions, are you sure you covered everything? Because this is a professional roofer, and they know what they have to do to replace the roof. So the value that you have in front of you, in our opinion, is extraordinary and well worth considering.
Thank you. Any questions for the architect? Thank you, Bill. Ed Noble's here, I don't need to put you on camera if you don't want to be.
I don't think really there's much I can offer.
Yeah, but our builder, contractor is here, if, if there are any questions, I can pull him up to the podium. I want to, I might have a question for you, Ed. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to pull you to the podium, I just, someone out there is going to ask the question, wishes that we ask the question, you get what you pay for. And we are getting good price on this roof, where we thought it was going to be $370,000. We were at the vision committee stage, and we're at 170, it's less than half the price. Guaranteed for 20 years, you're ripping off the old roof, you're putting on better insulation to code, the standard codes, so better efficiency, and putting on a roof that's going to last us 20-plus years. Is there anything I need to know?
The roofer specified the products, et cetera. So this is, you know, his ideal point of comfort.
Okay.
Is best value to the owner with these dollars.
Okay.
So it's not a, you're connected, specified products, this is the roofer has.
Ed, what would be the timeframe? If I, if I can get to town meeting on the 4th of August, so virtually that, that day at midnight, that night at midnight, we'll have approval and appropriations.
We know that it's going to proceed, and we can get them on board and ready to go.
Okay.
Right now, we've got to get it done because we're starting to get damage inside.
Yeah.
And it's, we can't afford to project.
Thank you, thank you, Ed. Bill, Bill and Brian, do you remember the age of the HVAC systems? We replaced one, didn't we?
Yeah, I want to, yeah. Bill said we decided not to. We did replace one of the units, the one that had an estimated five years of life remaining. The one that had an estimated 10 years of life remaining is still installed and it's operating today. It wasn't operating yesterday, but it was looked at today and it's, and it's operating. So that, you know, to be totally transparent, that's not going to last 20 years either, and it will need to be replaced at some time in the future.
Just like the one on this roof, right?
What about the town?
I have a question.
Yes, Dan.
So on the unit that hasn't been replaced, on the air, it's a air handle, air handle with, right?
Yeah.
When it does get replaced, is that going to impact the new roof? Just like the work we're doing now has impacted the current roof?
Bill Silver, again, to answer your question, air handlers are replaced constantly on young roofs, old roofs. Roofers are always brought in as a supplemental to the HVAC contractor that has, hires the crane, puts the unit in place. Curbs are reconfigured for the structure, and then the roofs are re-flashed and then bonded to the, in this case, relatively young membrane.
So that can be done without affecting the, the life of this roof?
No, as long as the roofing system that is flashed in is the same manufacturer, the warranty is maintained.
Thank you.
That's a good point, thank you. Other questions from the Board of Selectmen? For Mr. Dagel, for the architects, for, for Ed Noble. I do thank the, as many members of the town building committee. This is a tough project, probably no tougher than any other project you do. You just built three schools at the same time, God bless you. You had a bigger contingency, I might add. You had a little bit more leeway. This is a tight little contingency, and we knew that going in. We were trying to deliver, and we still have, delivered a quality product for the town at the lowest possible price. But thank you for your service to the town. Rocky, do you want to add anything? This is your baby, technically, right? So Ray O'Connor is, O'Connor is our, the chair of our town building committee, and I'm amazed at how, how much you retain with these projects. You know every bell and whistle on these things.
First, Ray O'Connor, 23 Roxbury Court, and I'm chairman of the town building committee. I would like to comment, Paul, on his presentation, it was excellent. The only thing, at our last meeting, we approved the change order, subject to release of town funds. So we don't have to have another meeting, you know, once the funds are approved. What is the, how's that, how's that work?
Board of Finance, I believe, will be, if, if it's approved tonight, the Board of Finance will listen to this, well, three members are here, thank you for coming, but they'll get this next week, and then the following Wednesday, August 4th, I believe, or 3rd, but it'll be a Wednesday night at 7 o'clock, we'll have a town meeting for the final approval of the funds.
And when will that, that vote be tallied?
It's just a town meeting, it'll be at the, on the spot. We will not have a need to go to referendum.
And then I, then I can release the contract?
Kind of what I said to Ed. Kind of what I said to Ed a little while ago about midnight that night. Let's go out and fix that roof.
Much past my bedtime, but I'll.
Yeah, I know. I know. But Ed will get a text, and he'll call his roofer, and we'll get busy quickly.
Yeah, because it is holding up the communications installation, which holds up the whole project.
Holds up the whole project, yeah.
If we can get the money approved, that would be great. Thank you.
Hey, one thing.
Go ahead.
First of all, it's good to see you in person. It's been a while. Second, just so everyone knows, what percentage are we done with this project?
87 at the last, at the last.
Yeah, okay. So just so you know, so we're looking at, you know, what's left of our contingency. We're 87% done. So most of the unknowns are on here.
Identified.
Yes, enlisted. Ray's kept a good Excel sheet all the way through this, and that's what was presented tonight.
Thanks.
My question was, on the insulation of the electronics communications room, is that in the critical path for the ultimate completion and moving?
Oh, most definitely.
So it can't be done, I mean.
That's the purpose of, that's the purpose of the whole building, is 911 and all that.
It's not in the critical path for CO, but it's in the critical path to move the police department into the building to have a function.
Occupancy, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you for all you do for our town. Amazing to have the talent we have on that building committee. And I promise you, there's no other buildings being built anytime soon, so you can all, we'll get this one done.
And just another note on the exhaust hood, that is on hold right now. They're holding off because it's not going to hold up a CO. The stove, from my understanding, was like a $1,000 stove.
No, the stove was going to be relocated from the current building. We were not purchasing.
We weren't even purchasing, so $42,000 range hood is very excessive. It's a commercial one that would be in a commercial restaurant.
Right.
So it was determined because it's kind of a commercial or, yeah, commercial type building, that it was going to be required after, after we were told it wasn't required. So that one's going to be on hold, and that, that's a question. Do we want to put a $42,000 range hood that would serve as a commercial restaurant in town just for some dinners we made once in a while?
To toast our day.
And, you know.
If it comes up later, we might be able to do. Can I ask the question to Ray, maybe to Ed, maybe to Bill, maybe to Brian? I gotta wait for them.
Slap him.
Slap him, would you? Are we putting the vent in for that?
The vent is the most expensive part of it, so I know you are not.
Okay, so there's no chimney?
There's no chaise.
Chaise.
Between the wood itself and the vent that goes to the roof, those are the two major components that's within range.
That's not happening, then, okay. I know there was some discussion.
There's no point in doing another penetration to your roof. Go ahead.
Understand, so we'll figure this thing out.
And if someday, depending on the other uses that the town takes for the building, if a kitchen was to be put on the second floor, that cost would be reduced based on the length of the vent.
Just one last wrinkle in this whole saga, and that is, we were told early on, I think the Vision Committee members that were here were part of that discussion about getting FEMA funds to pay for the big generator, the $200,000 generator that has to sit out there, that's installed now, by the way. And we were told early on, definitely would qualify for FEMA funding. You're bringing all your public safety facilities together in one building, blah, 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 blah. The story goes on. And when we applied, we applied three, I believe, three times we applied for this FEMA grant. Julie, you did all the work. Julie Wilson's in our audience. You did all the work. I'll get some of this wrong, Julie, but I can't have you come up because you're not, well, maybe you, anyway. At first, they said, you can't, you can't get the grant because you're not in the building yet. It's a building under construction. You wouldn't qualify. Then another time was a no. The third time was, oh, you've already installed it? Well, we don't do reimbursements, or something like that. That one's still pending, and I'm meeting with Joe Courtney's office tomorrow again on the subject with Chief and a few others to talk about this. If we were denied, and denied, and denied through this whole process, when exactly did we qualify? When exactly did this, should this application have been approved if it was nothing but roadblocks? I'll mention that this, this kind of funding is available and is sitting in account right now at FEMA for towns, but they make it very difficult for you to receive the money. Had we received that, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't be, we'd be able to use that money for the roof. The generator was part of the, of the build, of part of the price, but that money would have been savings. It would have been a credit onto the account, and we would have been able to use that to make the decision. The building committee would have made that decision to replace the roof with that funding. That funding isn't necessarily shut out. We might not be using the ARP funding if we can get the FEMA funding before the end of the project. And that is very possible. But we do need the appropriation approved because the building committee is not authorized to spend any money it doesn't have, nor would we ever want them to, of course, common sense. But we want to make sure that money's in pocket. If we don't ever have to reach into that pocket, even better if we get a check from FEMA. Mr. Drebek will remind me that all money is our money. All this ARP money is our money, or shall I say, our grandkids' money. I know that, but if that money's out there and it's going to go to some town, by God, I'm going to try hard to get it for our town. And I commend Julie and the Chief, Julie Wilson and the Chief, for trying so hard during this process to get all the FEMA grant, all the grants we can, but especially this FEMA grant. There is an energy grant. I'll ask the architects one last question. Would we, would we qualify for any rebating on the installation of this extra insulation on the roof? Is that an energy saving?
No.
Okay.
It's basic code requirement.
It's, okay.
And Mark, one other item that, you know, they didn't put in here is a potential reduction of the overall cost, is there is a rebate pending from EverSource. That's estimated to be at $7,500, up to maybe $9,000 or $10,000. Once again, it's, they'll usually come in when the work is done and determine what it is. But, you know, I didn't put that in my numbers because it's not money we can spend because we don't have it yet, as I spoke to Anna. But that'll be another reduction in costs for the overall project as well.
Thank you. Any other questions, the Board of Selectmen? No, we can do a motion?
This soon?
Oh, no, we can sit here. It's only 8:30.
Is somebody on the, is somebody that was on the committee making a motion?
I'll defer to senior, senior member of the board, seeing as I've been so involved with it.
Okay. I'd like to move forward, present a motion, move that a special appropriation in the amount of $200,000 for the planning, design, acquisition, construction, equipping, and furnishing of the public safety building to specifically include roof replacement, the source of funds being bond proceeds.
The source of funds now being American Rescue.
Thank you. The source of funds being the American Rescue Fund related to the project and is hereby adopted and recommended for approval by the Board of Finance and by the legal voters of the town at a special town meeting.
I will second that.
Should the date be included for the town meeting?
No, we're going to have to do a resolution of the town meeting after the Board of Finance meets, and should they pass it forward, we'll meet as a, we'll meet as a special, of a 10-minute Board of Selectmen meeting to schedule the call for the town meeting. We anticipate it will be August 4th. I keep saying August 4th. Let me just verify that. August 4th at 7:00 PM, just to be sure. We have a motion, I believe it was seconded. Mr. Daigle, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, it's a unanimous vote, 5-0. Next on the agenda is public comment. I'm sure there's a few people who'd like to speak.
Lisa Picarazzi, 14 Oak Hill Drive, Nyantec, former Vision Committee member. So I must confess, I was not prepared to make any remarks tonight because I expected a very different meeting. But I suppose when you look naive up in the dictionary, you'll see a picture of my face. Won't be the first time. This, a little bit feels to me like rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. I mean, I don't think anybody is going to argue whether or not we need to fix the roof. That's really, in my mind, not the issue. The issue is there was no inspection done on the building. And to be candid, Paul, you were the Chair. I nominated you to be Chair of the Vision Committee over someone else who was nominated because I know you are a leader at Electric Boat, and I felt I could trust you. And when I had concerns about there not being an inspection report, and I called our first Selectman and emailed him and was summarily ignored, you said nothing in my defense as a member of the Vision Committee. Really disappointing, still is disappointing. We had a right on that commission to get inspection reports for a building that the taxpayers bought, and we didn't have one. It's not whether the roof was going to need to be replaced. The issue was if we had done our due diligence and had seen the condition of the building, we would have leveraged the purchase price of the building based on the roof and the two air handling units, which Silver and Petricelli came back and said they were $95,000 apiece for the air handling units. One was due to fail soon, the other within, you know, five years, and the roof wouldn't last probably five years. We could sit here all day long and debate the length, the life, remaining life in those pieces of, those parts of the structure. And I would just say to any of you, if you were going to buy a house, would you not have it inspected? I'm thinking not. It would be foolish. And if you had it inspected, and you found out the roof was an original roof, you would simply negotiate the purchase price of that house based on the condition of the roof and such other equipment. But we just had to get in that building, had to do it, had to do it, had to do it, had to do it. And so the taxpayers end up paying for that. And when I was on that Vision Committee, and I was the lone voice to say, hey, guys, we need to replace that now, we don't want this thing end up to be a treehouse that's going to fall apart in a few years, I had no support from anyone, including a few folks in the audience who were on that committee. And these issues came to all of your attention on the Board of Selectmen. So I hold all of you responsible for this. Not that the roof needs repairing, that you tried to fleece the taxpayers to get the cost down so everyone would feel good about it. And I'm going to thank Roseanne for admitting the fact she had integrity to say this is on her, and she should have spoken out. I wish you had done it sooner, but at least you did it tonight, so I will thank you for that. No one else has done that. You'll have to forgive me if my comments are a little disjointed. I really wasn't prepared to speak tonight. As I said, I expected a different meeting. I think I heard you say, Paul, this roof is, quote, "an opportunity for us because it's only $175,000 versus the original $372." Well, okay, well, we're not comparing apples to apples. We're talking about a 30-year roof to a 20-year roof. And I'm just going to say, that number is hard for me to believe. With supply chain issues right now with COVID, it's awful hard for me to believe that there isn't some escalated cost in the cost of the roof. And in terms of the air handling units, we're going to be in the same boat again. And I, I mean, I don't want to say I told you so because it sounds trite, but I mean, we should have negotiated that purchase price and done our due diligence. We should have inspected it. Right off the bat, it would have been $200,000 for each air handling unit. Because if it were, if it were any of your money and you were buying a house, you can bet your bottom dollar you'd want to get the most for your money. You guys are stewards of taxpayer money, so I hold every one of you accountable for this. You're coming in here like you're trying to convince people that we should replace the roof. Of course we should. Where do we want the policemen to be? They're in a place now that was never maintained, which I don't know if that was a setup or not, but I'm figuring, how could we let that building get to the condition that it's in? And so here we are. We, you know, great, we want them to get in the building, so nobody's going to say, don't fix, don't fix the roof. That's not the issue. It should have been included in the purchase price upfront, but we played games with the politics because we didn't want it to look like it costs so much. And we should have done our due diligence. We should have had that building inspected and come up with a total package. I don't care if we went with a new building or not, but if we went with a new building, we wouldn't be talking about, hopefully, we can squeeze out five more years out of this air handling. Hopefully, we can squeeze more. None of that would be going on. So it's not an opportunity, Paul. So, you know, I'm just, I guess I expected a little more accountability tonight, which is why I really didn't have any prepared remarks. I just stood back there listening, and I'm thinking to myself, are you guys kidding me? Seriously? This is what we're talking about, whether or not we should replace the roof? Not the issue. We should have handled this sooner. And now we're going to go back, we pull this out of our capital expense, or we're bonding it, and we say, oh, this looks good. And I said, this is what we're going to do. We're going to come back to the Board of Finance, and we're going to say, oh, we need more money for this, and we need more money for that. I mean, it's, it's a travesty. And I'm just going to say, I'm disappointed in every one of you. I thank you, Roseanne, for speaking out. It's a little bit late, but I'm disappointed in every one of you.
Anyone else?
Hello again. Camille Alberti, speaking as the Board of Finance Chair. We are all public servants. We are permitted to make mistakes, right? We're trying to do the best we can to serve the town. Better yet, when we're accountable for those mistakes. So as Ms. Picarazzi previously stated, I appreciated the fact that Ms. Hardy owned up to what she thought was a mistake. So thank you for that. That shows real integrity. What we are not permitted to do is to rewrite history, okay? So I heard a lot of comments tonight from Mr. Daigle about how we knew this roof would last a year, maybe three to five, and then it was a year. That's rewriting history because on June 20th, 2020, Silver Petricelli made a comment to the day newspaper, and I quote, "The roof's life can be significantly extended by 10 years or more with patching and repairs planned as part of the $7.17 million estimate." Excuse me, that was on June 18th, not June 20th. Regardless, this was three or so odd months before the public went to a referendum to vote on whether they should appropriate the additional $1.2 million earmarked from the FEMA funds and an additional $985,000 in additional bonding. So when the people went to the referendum to vote on whether we should appropriate that money, it was based on a representation that that roof could be extended again by 10 years or more. Now, I heard Silver Petricelli come up here and say, we don't really know that until we remove some shingles or look at the iron rust or whatever it was. Shame on us for not having a building inspector in there at that time. That was a second opportunity to bring in a building inspector to inspect that roof, to be sure that that representation was correct. So again, the voters voted a very slim margin, by less than 200 votes, those additional appropriations were made. All right, that appropriation last September, I believe it was, or October, received a 54% approval rating. That's how close that vote was. Now, tonight, you're asking the good people of East Lime to trust you again. And so I ask you, why should they trust you? This whole thing is very disappointing. I believe we have no choice but to replace this roof. We are too far down the rabbit hole. This is what we cautioned all along to the taxpayers, but they voted. They did vote by a 54% approval rating, right? So now we have to finish this project, all right? I am of the... I am of the mindset that we have to appropriate this money to get the job done, but that does not excuse our accountability to the good people of East Lime. And why is that important? Because this should be a learning opportunity, this is an educational opportunity. So the next time a project of this magnitude comes before the town, they will remember this project as the sham it was.
Any other comments? Richard?
Rich Steele, 23 Rose Lane, East Lime. When I heard Bill Silver with his time up here at the podium, he mentioned in, in 2019 that the roof was good till 2020-plus and the three-to-five-year projection, if I can use his word, Pollyanna projection, forgive me if I am misquoting you. So it seems as though the lifespan of this roof was probably known fairly early and that we didn't really have a roof that was gonna go to three to five years or go to 10 years with repairs. The second thing is, for the replacement of the roof, that does sound like quite a fantastic price, almost $200,000 less than what was originally bid. I believe Mr. Silver also said, wow, with that price, and that he's done a number of schools and other public buildings. And I don't know what the reasons would be that the cost estimates that he would have would be so much higher than what this current contractor is bidding, or not bidding, but relaying to us. And I wonder, in terms of materials, is there a difference in the materials that are going to be used for this roofing project that bring the cost down that low? And even if we have a warranty, a warranty doesn't always mean that you won't have leaks, that you won't have problems with the installation, future problems due to the installation. And since we have all our IT equipment and the communications equipment sitting upstairs right under the roof, which is currently in the path of the leaking, I think we need to kind of really check out fully what this estimate of the roof job is versus what Silver Petricelli had given to us in the past. Again, I wanna thank Roseanne for shifting the funding, move it to the ARP funding rather than the rebates. I think that makes a lot more sense for the taxpayers. And as others have mentioned, this really isn't a decision, it's a have-to. The police cannot get in there, the emergency management cannot get in there, the fire marshal cannot get in there until this is done because the necessary equipment for them to do their jobs and for them to protect our community can't be installed until the roof is in integrity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dravik?
John Dravik, 18 Dravik Road. Yeah, history keeps repeating itself in this town. Pool, roof, tennis courts, boardwalks, all came in for more money, we were lowballed and you people keep letting it happen, maybe on purpose, maybe by accident, but I'm tired of it. Disposal cost of the old roof, no discussion of that, is that included? I was looking at the engineers' reports, engineers' news and world reports, discussion of all materials used, everything from aluminum, tar, asphalt, et cetera, everything's taken about a 10% jump in the past few months. So you're not getting that good a deal, but we're using some substandard, old stuff, minimal warranty, like the pool roof, we wanted to complain about that, that guy disappeared. The gym floor, we've had all kinds of problems like that. About 25 years ago, when the Frazier administration, he wanted us to buy that building in the industrial park, I forget what we called it, Ron used to call it the old UPS building, to some kind of gymnasium thing and then out, saying, great shape, great shape, we gotta do it, we can put all this equipment in there. We took a tour of the building, the water was pouring through the roof, oh, just a minor leak. Well, the next day I put a ladder up on a roof, I took pictures, I found holes in that roof this large, you couldn't patch them with tar. All this, all the fasteners had been coated with tar, all done by the town of East Lime to make Wayne Frazier look good, like we were gonna buy a good building. He was gonna give us a piece of crap, off a top dollar. And this, here we are again, doing this police building. All we did was trade one leaky building for another leaky building and fleece the taxpayer for the, for the difference. Thanks a lot. You all own it, it's nice you did own up to it, Roseanne, but you're a day late and a few dollars short, but it's our tax dollars. You people are gonna move on, you're gonna leave the next people another headache. You fleece the taxpayer. That's all I can think of when I look at this building and that's all everybody's gonna think of when they look at this building. If you had that meeting today, that building would have gone down in flames. You paid 35% too much for the building at that time, probably 40% by now. Now, everybody knows it's a problem, we couldn't unload it if we tried, we'd have been better off, God forbid, buying the Bob's building in the industrial park. Great location, a little more money, but we wouldn't have been a pig in the poke. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sure.
I'd like to clarify that when I said that I regretted vote, I regretted not pursuing the fact that we needed to include the amount of money for a new roof. I don't regret my vote for what seemed to be the best deal at the time, for what was available and what the choices were. I believe people will remember this in the future and it'll be a project that they'll be proud of, to house our emergency, all of our emergency management services. Thank you for all the people who worked hard on this and tried to do the best they could for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Thank you, Roseanne, for clarifying. If it was suggested that the price of the building wasn't negotiated, by all means was...
Sorry, this all sounds...
You can't, John, can I? See ya. It was negotiated. We are, the taxpayers, the Vision Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and even the Board of Finance voted on this project based on the facts we had. And you're right, Richard, I heard contradictory time schedules, you know, in 19, they said it would be good until 20, but then April 29th of 19, in the minutes of the meeting, three to five years and possibly more, as was pointed out in the day, with minor ongoing repairs and patches, that building can go up to 10 years on the roof. We still have 10 years on the HVAC system, you're right, we should question that as well, but that was the information we were given. Experts, inspectors, architects, engineers, town people going up and checking out this building, you're, we only could make a decision based on the information we had and we can only communicate that information out. I met with Camille, Chief Finkelstein, and Paul Dagel last night at the building to discuss, discuss the roof issue and tour the building. The discussion lasted for more than an hour, a lot of, we should'ves, if we had this chance to do it, we would have done it differently, talked about fears of further spending, et cetera. But one comment was made that stuck with me, Camille suggested that this town is owed an apology. Sometimes in this business, we have to have the full faith of those we surround ourselves with, the experts that give us the information. Right back to the very first day that a few citizens came into my, my office and said, there's a building on the other side of town that I think, I think would be ideal to solve this problem finally. Naturally, the Vision Committee, the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the taxpayers, the two separate referendums had to rely on the information we were given. And while 98% of the information was correct, no, it wasn't 100%. We were off on the roof by a couple of years. We thought three to five, ended up being one to three. As a first selectman, I do apologize for this, I took that information in and we communicated it out. Do I wish I never even proposed a solution to the everlasting problem of what are we gonna do with our police? Yeah, I do, but it was my job to do something. Do I wish that we didn't have to build three elementary schools for $36 million and in turn scramble to find a cheaper alternative to put the police in a renovated building instead of going find a prime piece of property, not Bob's furniture, but a prime piece of property to build a new building? Yeah, I wish so, absolutely, I wish we didn't have that school building that started when I got into office at $86 million. I do regret where we are today. Do I regret? No, absolutely not. This is the solution. We're gonna thank, we're gonna, townspeople are gonna be thankful that we solved the problem. The next first selectman's gonna come in not having this problem for the first time in decades of what to do with our public, public safety officers. The taxpayers have endorsed this project twice, based on about 98% of correct information. We're off on the roof. And the Vision Committee, who unanimously voted in the end for this budget, were made up of citizens, you and me, who took the information in as best as we could get the information and made a decision on what we should build, et cetera. This, this, I thank you for the input tonight. I thank the architects, builder, building committee, Board of Finance came out to listen, and citizens of this town that came out, I thank you for your service, for acknowledging this. We have a $7.2 million project that needs $200,000 more to put a cap on it, to give us the confidence that we can move forward and deliver this project to the town, to the taxpayers, to the people who work for us, and it be a quality product. And Rocky, thank you for all you're doing to deliver a quality product to the town. Any other comments?
I would like to make one.
Yeah.
As I opened my statement tonight, there are differing opinions on this need for building, it's been going on for decades. This is not a personal thing, I think everybody involved on the Vision Committee did, to the best of their ability, make a decision on the recommendation to move forward. The fact that the roof could've, or maybe should've been replaced before we started the renovation, or the fact that it now needs to be done vice three or two, three, four, five years from now, I think everyone on the committee made a decision that they thought was the best decision in the interest of the taxpayers. I know I did, and I now know the roof needs to be replaced, but I can go to sleep tonight knowing I did what I thought was right, not for any other purpose. That's all I had to say, thank you.
I'd just like to follow up too, and thank you, Paul, for your leadership on this. Your experience has been invaluable, this is what you do, you've dealt with this in your business where you've had stuff that go over budget and under budget. We all know your integrity, and I'm sorry it was question tonight, thank you. And I'll just add that the, I was questioned whether the cleaning and disposal of the roof material was included, it is included in this quote.
Of course. If nothing else, I can take a motion. Yes, Mr. Cunningham, of course.
You know, it's been a difficult and long and drawn-out project and everybody that I interacted with acted in good faith and did the best that they could to make it something that we could be proud of and something that would serve the town in the future. We didn't have all the information that we might have had and perhaps we should have had. And I'm not construction manager, I, I don't have experience in that area, and there were some suggestions that we should have had more information. And I wish we had, and I wish we could have had more insight, but I think, in the long run, I think, as Mark said, I think it will be a good project that the town can be proud of. We ran into a problem here with the roof. My own personal feeling at the time was, I was hopeful we would have the money to do both air handlers and the roof and make it a really perfect, as much as possible, building. But we had information that led us to believe that we could get it, you know, we could put that can, kick the can down the road for 10 years. And, and that was a false assumption, and, but we relied on that assumption in trying to make the decisions on the money that we would, we would need. And I'm hopeful that once the project is completed, we'll be able to look at it and see that it's gonna be a good thing. So I thank everybody that has expressed opinions pro and con, Lisa, I know you were vocal about it, and you pointed out early on about the roof and you were very concerned about it. And, you know, I wish, I wish we had known that it was only a few years that we'd like we could get out of it, so I'll give you that, you were right, and so, but let's, I hope we can move forward and have a good ending to this project and get it behind us and get the police where they need to be, where they'll be safe and be able to do their job. Thank you.
Comment? I'll move to adjourn. Seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're on.